Okay, Jared Roll Call.
Tammy Blank.
Here.
Cindy Bro.
Here.
Julie, it's Marty Kukrow. Mr. Harland.
Here.
Mr. Kerr.
Present.
Dr. Rig.
Here.
Dr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Schroed.
Here.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for coming out this evening. Um, I just have a very brief, um, message that I would like to give to the public this evening. Um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, we accepted with regret the resignation of, uh, one of our colleagues, Tammy Leeper from this board. And we would like to invite, um, uh, the members of this community that would be interested in fulfilling the remainder of her term to submit, uh, letters of interest. Um, we would like you to put a small resume with that, um, uh, giving us some of the highlights of your career and how you might be able to help continue to move the district, district forward. We're asking that you submit those letters, uh, by the close of business Friday, June the 3rd. And we ask that those letters be submitted, uh, to the Board Secretary, um, Anice. And, and anybody that again has any interest in fulfilling her term, uh, we, we highly encourage them to submit, submit those letters. I have one last brief thing. I want to personally congratulate the rugby team. Uh, we're gonna have a little more of a formal presentation here, uh, under item two in the agenda. So if you'll please, uh, stand by, but I did wanna recognize, uh, the success of our, of our rugby players. Okay, we're down to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, SGA, she's not here this evening. Superintendent's report, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I appreciate it. Couple of things. One, it's gonna be, uh, redundant, but a good thing. Congrats to the guys here today for their championship. Dr. Schaefer's gonna recognize you on the presentation, but we're very pleased and very proud of you. I mean, you guys put in the work and shows. Um, I can't thank you enough for what you did to make this community proud. Additionally, uh, Mr. President, summer camp registration is still open, so this is a call for our families. Again, if you're interested in the summer camp, which starts on June 8th, please register. When I send out my superintendent's report to our families, I put a link in there for their convenience for them to register. And we're making sure that we wanna get people, um, signed up and ready to go. At this point, we're approaching 300, so the numbers are growing like we predicted. Uh, but we wanna make sure our families are reminded gently about this opportunity. Additionally, in our newsletter, we have a PTA reflection. Uh, we had some students, ISD elementary students, who were recognized for the entries in the 2021-22 Pennsylvania PT, PTA Reflections Contest, and this year's theme was "I Will Change the World" by Hope Popson out of Horace Mann Elementary School was recognized with the Award of Merit in the photo intermediate category. And Avery Schneider from East Pike Elementary earned an Award of Excellence in Visual Arts Primary category for his art project entitled "My Four Chambers Will Change the, Will Change the World." Uh, additionally, I had one of the coolest days ever here in Indiana area school district on Friday. Uh, Miss Cindav was there. Uh, I think my Mr., uh, Mr. Harley was there. There's, Ms. Blank was there. Um, I, I know the board members, other board members who may could join online. Uh, it was a battle bots competition. It was pretty cool. The kids did a really great job with their battle bots and, uh, I've never seen anyone, everyone get so excited over battle bots. Everyone was cheering, screaming. I look, I'm the moron in the picture with my hands up, you know? Uh, but it was, it was a great time. The kids just did an incredible job. And when you talk about 21st century learning and you talk about the great things in this district where we promote learning from failure, reengineering and creativity and critical thinking skills, these kids are a great reflection. So we helped to grow the program. Uh, this year we had four teams and one team from, um, Homer Center. We're hopeful that this will generate some interest. Uh, but I think what the board community should be aware of, what the work you've seen on Friday, you usually see at high school level or college level. And these were six, seventh and eighth graders doing that level of work. So we're really proud of it and the, the board deserves a lot of credit for two reasons. One, supporting it financially, but two, um, this is a result of your vision. You asked us to make sure we move forward and increase STEM programming in our schools. And the teachers about to call those two gentlemen, Mr. Harrington. And Mr. Dole just did an amazing job. And there's a gentleman from ICTC. I, I forgot. I know his name's Mike, only because that's my first name, but
Resenti.
Mike Resenti, he helped us. So you've seen a lot of people helping us and pulling together. So that was really just a great day on Friday.
Mike, before you move on from that, um, an eighth grader sung the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, it was, she was amazing. Yep.
And she get every note. Okay. I, 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 I'd like to invite her to sing here for, for our opening. And she's just unbelievable. And she's just unbelievable talent.
We could certainly, uh, change out the pledge for the Star Spangled Banner. That would not be a problem.
She was amazing. And what we're doing is she's the, the winning team, uh, and teachers are coming to the June 13th meeting. Maybe if, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, I'll invite her to see if she can make it as well.
That'd be great.
Okay. Uh, the IHA Science Club, uh, 15 members of the Science Club represented the high school this week at Pennsylvania Junior Academy's, uh, Science State Competition. They did a phenomenal job earning, uh, a couple of first place awards. That's enumerated in my report. Uh, special thanks to Mr. Edmonton and all the ESL teachers and English as second language teachers. They had a multicultural night where they celebrated different diversity and cultures, cultures in our school district and it was a great time sharing wonderful food, stories and presenting and meeting with families across the district. And lastly, I wanna recognize the young lady for her music accolades. We have a high school student, um, by the name of Emma Sheeran, who won a spot to perform side by side performance with the Pittsburgh Symphony Orchestra this past Tuesday in Heinz Hall. So there's a lot of great things going on in our district, a lot of room for improvement and growth, but there, you know, the guys are just a small part of that, but we appreciate you guys as well. So there's a lot of good things to talk about. And now send us out here at the conclusion of the meeting, Mr. President.
Okay, Mike, thank you. I do wanna, um, uh, kinda reiterate something and, and support one of your points in your message. Last year, the summer camp was extremely successful and was very beneficial, uh, to help with some of the learning deficiencies because of the COVID. I'm thrilled that there are 300 of our students that are interested in this. And I would encourage any of the parents, um, and the students as well, um, uh, to be, not be bashful and to continue. I'd love for him to come back next, uh, month and tell us that, uh, it's at 500 and we've gotta hire two more teachers to help, uh, help with all those, all those kids. So thanks, thank you all for that. Uh, we don't have a solicitor's report. Is he online?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jim, presentation.
All right. Well, I am tasked with, uh, the great, the great job of recognizing the, the boys rugby team. Um, last Sunday at, uh, we traveled to Reading. They faced off against the state college, uh, team in the finals of the PA Rugby State Championship. And they won a 19 to 17 victory in sweltering conditions, uh, for players and fans alike. They went essentially undefeated, yet won tie this year, right? Yeah. So, uh, a very successful season. And this is a team that did not exist before 2018. Um, uh, here with us today is a lot of the seniors, a lot of the field captains. Uh, rugby is a sport where the coach is very animated on the sidelines, shouting instructions, but there's no breaks, there's no huddles, there's no plays. So it's, it's beat to beat, uh, moment to moment. The field captains are really in control of the, the pace of the game, all but for a couple of stops here and there, and they did a marvelous job. So we'd like to recognize them for their achievement and welcome home the state champions.
Coach, would you like to say anything?
Uh, I would love to. Thank you. Would you like me to go anywhere?
Well, you're fine there. We just, we'll have to give you a microphone. I apologize.
Big trophy. Thank you. Um, I could talk for an hour about how much admiration and respect I have, uh, these five boys here and all of their teammates who are not here today. Um, to bring home a state championship from Little Indiana, PA is, um, pretty amazing. On the way, we beat the best team in Pittsburgh. We beat the best team in Philadelphia. And we beat the best team from the middle of the state. We have a small population here. We do not have a lot of boys to draw from. What we have is a heart and an attitude and an effort that refuses to be beaten. These boys will have this bond forever. To bring home a state championship to this town. Um, from what I understand, it's not been done before in a team sport. And, um, to be able to share that with each other, I, I can't express how proud I am of them. I've been a part of this community for getting on seven years now. And everyone here has been incredibly welcoming to me and my family. Uh, and to be able to play a small part in bringing a championship to this community is more than I could have dreamed of. And I say small part because the entire credit belongs to them. They go out there and Jim's exactly right. When they walk over that white line, they're on their own. They can't look over at the coach and have the coach call in the play. They can't look over at the coach and ask, what do we do now? There's no time. This game does not stop. They were playing in 90-degree heat for an hour and a half without stopping in the most physical game you can possibly imagine. Their feet were burning, their lungs were burning. You would have had to drag them off on a stretcher for them to not bring home this trophy. These guys are unbelievable. They really are. Um, we've got five guys here today. Start at the end there. Zach Harrington is one of our team captains. Um, and, uh, had a, a broken nose this season. Um, and he decided that, uh, it was more important to go win the state championship and get that nose fixed. And Zach is definitely special. Um, he's gonna play rugby at Slippery Rock next year, so really proud of that. Owen Clifford is another senior, uh, and Owen is just one of those lunch pail guys who brings it every time, puts in so much physical effort. Um, you know, he's been on the team, I think, the last three years. Um, and, and we're really gonna miss him. He's going on to Pittsburgh Technical College. And, um, my hope is that he's gonna play amateur men's club rugby, uh, and bring it for the next 10 years out there. Blake Hodak, uh, is another senior. He's going to play rugby at IUP next year, so he and Zach will be going up against each other. Um, Blake is incredible. He's played so many different positions this year. It would be like a football player trying to play linebacker, running back, defensive lineman. I mean, you know, he looks like a pretty boy, but this guy just flies around the field and hits anything. Um, over there, we have Josh Nelson. Uh, Josh is a junior and he's gonna be our club captain next year. Uh, Josh is, um, he leads by example. Doesn't talk a whole lot on the field, but, um, he just brings a physical attitude. And, um, you know, certainly did that yesterday, even though he was, he was hurting in that heat. Um, finally, last but not least, we have our other co-captain, Jake McCracken. Uh, Jake is also going to play at IUP next year. Um, you know, really proud of all these guys that they're going to be able to accomplish that. Um, Jake is, uh, again, one of the heartbeat of the team, you know, as, as he goes, we go. And, uh, he drags people on his back and just says, come with me. And boy, do they ever follow him. Uh, so again, you know, I, I cannot, I can't sum up the pride I feel for these guys, the admiration I have for them and everything that they've accomplished. Um, and I, I look forward to us having this bond for the rest of our lives that we are state champions together, that we've accomplished this together. Um, and, um, you know, the one thing that I wanna point out is just the quality of young man that we have on this team. And all five of these guys have simplified that. The way that they treat the freshmen on the team, the sophomores on the team, in a way is one of the reasons we won the championship. We had several ninth and 10th graders on the field. And, and the reason that they're on the field and excelling on the field is the encouragement and the teaching that these senior players give them. I don't always see that. And the one thing that I can guarantee you is that there is no other group of young men who I would wanna go into battle with than the guys sitting right here and their teammates who aren't here today. So boys, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, and let's keep going. I'm sorry, there's just one, one other thing I'd like to add. I do wanna give a shout out to our other coaches who aren't here. Uh, my co-head coach, Todd Rabel, who was the driving force in getting the program off the ground. Our assistant coaches, Gordon Wells, Larry Harrington, and, um, Dr. Greg Lynch, uh, who, you know, helped us get to where we are today. Um, I also wanna give a shout out to our athletic trainer, Allison Hunt. She is just phenomenal. And the work that she's done with these boys is above and beyond. She's there for everything, uh, and we can't thank her enough. Um, and finally, to the board. Um, you know, my sincere request to you is that you continue to support our program. Um, for the first few years, it was largely coach-funded financially. Um, you helped us out this year and that helped us bring home our first state championship. So I would humbly ask that, uh, you continue that support to give the next generation the opportunity that these young men have had and let us bring home another one. Thank you.
Coach, oh, just one last thing. There's a camera mounted on the, above the board there. So, um, the people in the audience have not had a chance to see the, the trophy. If you would please, could you have him sort of hold up the shiny side of that trophy for the public to see?
Yeah, this is Jake McCracken holding out the state championship trophy.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank, thank you very much.
Congrats, guys.
Yeah, it's a rare feat for a school district to win a state championship.
Any.
Let alone three years or four years after you start.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. See you guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I like how I told him. He told him to bring the trophy.
Yeah.
Boy, kids in the fifth grade.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, maybe this one was black.
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it.
All right, good. Great job. Okay, I believe we're down to, uh, item number three. Uh, approval of the minutes and agenda.
No move.
Okay, second.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry. Okay, I'm up on Indiana County Technology Center. We have not had a meeting since our last, um, board meeting, but we have one scheduled for tomorrow. Tammy, it's your turn.
Um, we had a board meeting just last week for Aaron. Um, it was the usual approval, hires and, uh, retirements and so on and so forth. Um, but I do wanna introduce the, they're doing a couple of sessions for teachers and administrators. One of the summer sessions they're doing is, uh, introduction to the science of reading, which I think we pretty much nailed already. Another one was, uh, how to leverage instructional coaching in your district. But you can go to smore, S-M-O-R-E dot com website and get details for that and many others.
Okay, and outreach?
We didn't meet again.
Okay, but I know you're talking to Mike about setting one up.
Yeah, we're, we're thinking about setting one up, uh, in June, so that way we're set up for the ball.
So, uh, Tom, looks like we're down to academic.
Yes, no need.
How much of this are you gonna do in consent?
All of it.
Thank you.
Is there any objections? Are we taking 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5 and 5.6 together?
I'd like 5.4 to go down.
Okay, any others? I move that, uh, the board accepts as opposed the motion 5.2, 5.3, 5.5 and 5.6.
Okay, moved in second. Okay, questions, comments, or discussion? Mike, is there anything you would like to, um, add on any of these?
Uh, well, I'll make a quick search. 5.2, this is an agreement we get entered the last several years here to partner with the IU8 to provide some additional support, uh, for our administration of teachers from ESL department. This seems to be a growing number with the university and partnership we have here, so we're grateful for their leadership. Um, Mr. Zhorchak proves, provide you with a special education plan. Justin, is there anything you wanna speak to that? Highlights are view?
No, it's really just a recap of the, of the existing programs that we have in place here in the district. Um, goes over our class rosters, class sizes, class spaces, how we evaluate. Um, that's pretty much, pretty much it.
But 5.5 is something we talked, I think, at three or four committee meetings about entering agreement with Sidarm Sports to, uh, have a specific athletic website, so that this is just denigrating that, taking care of that. And then 5.6, uh, for $450, we get to partner with Penn State and PA School Study Council to work up professional development opportunities, networking and, um, other legal updates as they come through. So it's a nice networking group for the district to be a part of.
Very good, Mike. Further questions, comments, or discussions?
Um, 5.5, um, the hope is that we have a more friendly, a more usable, uh, website. And that information that can get on it that is, that is current and accurate. So that's, that's, that's where we're heading with that.
Okay. All those in favor of those motions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry. 5.4.
Uh, I move that the board approves a agreement with somebody the university has submitted.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Second.
Okay, questions, comments, or discussion? Cindy, you want this pulled out?
I asked to have it pulled out because I would like to have it clarified exactly what this agreement is covering. If I understand, it's student teachers from Virginia attending the university and there's an online component. But what is?
Yeah, so, um, this one, I, I'm, 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 I think it's student teaching. We, we also approved, uh, a teacher, Ben Franklin, to a principal internship. So she's doing remotely. Um, I should double check with Rob on this, but it is for them to conduct some of their, um, student teaching hours and experiences in the district, whether it's student teaching or admin, uh, certification. We need a, a FLD agreement, uh, yeah.
And they would come to our facilities or?
Yeah, it's, this is most likely.
I understood there's an online component that our teachers might be supervising student teachers' teaching online?
No, I, I, I can double check it. To me, the way I understood it was this applies for people who, um, who are in the district, who are working, going back to do their student teaching and then were required to do an agreement. If you'd like, I can get more information. We can hold it till next week. Uh, this is something I went through Rob's office, but I'm not exactly sure. I can find out for you if you don't feel comfortable tonight.
I just, I, 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 I'm worried about, what I understood was student teachers doing their student teaching online and us having the cooperating teacher be the supervisor. And if that's what's going on, then, you know, and our cooperating teachers are great with student teachers in person in the classroom. But if there's an online component, as much as everybody, there's a big learning curve on that.
Yep.
And I don't know that we have, we've got great teachers, but do we have super online teachers who could teach and supervise a student teacher teaching online? If that, that's what I'm concerned.
I think those are fair points. How about this? Um, I asked the board for
How about if we just move the table?
Yeah, to June 6th.
And, and we take the vote on the table and it, and off we go.
Get moved to table.
Move to table. I need a second.
Second.
There we go.
Okay, no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, just, so table. Okay, Cindy, policy and personnel.
So we did not have a meeting since the last, uh, board meeting. And we've got lots and lots of motions. Um, we've got the resignation of support staff that the board accepts with regret. The letter of resignation from Nick Buckshaw, para educator, effective June 6th and authorizes the administration to post, advertise and interview for this position.
Second. Are we not doing any consent?
I, well, I will, but that one was a resignation. And I thought if somebody wanted to.
Say so?
Yeah.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And 6.3 is employment of support staff. We would be hiring a food service truck driver custodian and a, an administrative assistant. And these are the ones I'd like to take as consent. Um, the names will be provided for the, for the, uh, press. The summer school, we would be hiring a mentor for, um, summer school. Summer learning camp, teacher positions, uh, we would be hiring a teacher for that. Employment of summer learning camp support staff. We would be hiring four para professionals for that and one LPN. And the last consent item that I would love to do is 6.7. And that is hiring the head varsity dance coach as an extra duty, extra pay assignment.
Second.
Okay, moved in second on 6.3 through 6.7. Excuse me. Questions, comments, or discussion? Mike, is there anything you would like to add, um, uh, to this?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry.
Okay, 6.8. That the school board ratified the agreement between the Indiana area school district and the Indiana area Education Association as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? Nothing.
That'll make some, I guess. I got on the board about four or five years ago. And, uh, a lot of people asked me, why did I wanna be on the board? And that was a good question. And, uh, I actually had an interest in it going back probably 20 years. So the opportunity arose, so I, I ran and, and got elected. So then they said, well, why, why did you follow through with it? So I basically wanna give back to the community. I think I've made good decisions, but I basically do that based on research and, and facts and that sort of thing. So even before I got on the board, there was rumors that I always heard that the Indiana area school district paid their teachers a lot more than other districts. So when this agreement came to where, you know, we had to negotiate it, I started to do my research and my evaluations. So I reached out or I got, uh, 14, I think, different collective bargaining agreements from 14 different school districts and, and all the ones in Indiana County. Then Freeport area school district, Franklin Regional School District, Kiskey area, South Butler, which is also called NOC. So I, you know, started looking at all the different things that are in there, the healthcare, the, the, you know, dental, the, you know, other things that are in all these contracts. So then, then I looked at salaries, so there's a lot of stuff that's very similar throughout all these school districts. There was, there was two things that really jumped out at me though. One was One was I found that out of those 14 school districts, and I thought that was a pretty good representation. I just didn't go to the ones in the district or in the county here. I went outside to some of the what a lot of people consider better or good school districts. Couldn't say better, good school districts also. And I found that our district was the only one that had 10 steps within its pay, pay scale matrix, which is just phenomenal to me. I worked for state government for over 30 years. Our, our steps are 20 steps, but then you go back steps when you like get a promotion, which is similar to moving up with your education, I think with the school district. I looked at the federal pay scale. It's also similar. It basically probably takes you 30 years to maybe to get to the top of the scale because your first like three or four years in the federal pay scale, you move up a step, but then like years four through seven, you go up every other year. And then once you get above year seven, you it's every three years, I think, that you go up a pay step. So that, that just shocked me. So, you know, it's good to look into facts. Then I went online, couple of different websites to look at like the average teacher salaries across the state of Pennsylvania. And depending upon which site I found, there's, there's approximately 500, I think 504 school districts in the state. And I would have never guessed that little Indiana school district in rural Indiana county would be ranked 30th or 30, like fourth highest paid in the state. When you have all Southeast, Pennsylvania, Philadelphia, and all those counties, you have that northeast quadrant. You have Erie, you have Allegheny County and the surrounding school districts there. So then I started looking at those ones too, and again, ours jumped off the page at me. And you know, you could, you can use the excuse, I guess, that, you know, we've had COVID and all this, but so have all the other school districts. And so have a lot of other careers that haven't made the money that, that our, our salaries have been paid over the past decade or so. So what, what, I guess, I'm all for, you know, we need to do what's best for our students. That's one of my other commitments that I've made to myself. And we also have to take care of our buildings, which is all part of that. There's more pieces of the puzzle than just salaries in the school district. So our, our buildings, everybody agrees that they have been neglected for years, sometimes 50 or 70 years. You know, he's like, or Ben Franklin and Eisenhower have never been renovated. They've been, they were built in the 1950s. And yes, we are starting to do some work there. We're going to borrow money. We're going to borrow probably at least twice what we thought we were going to have to borrow. So again, you know, it's good to look into things. Then you get into all this other stuff that, you know, the tax base is going to continue to decline in this district. At least it appears to, you know, with IUP falling and all the reassessment that's been done. The businesses that have come and appealed their taxes, you know, it's not helping our, our revenue. There's not a lot of people moving into our district. Our enrollment's declining. Let's see here. Well, then we get these books, you know, in the middle or sitting on our front of our chairs when we come into these things. And I, you know, take them home and look through them and stuff. And, and some of the same topics keep appearing, but if, if you go to the finance, this is the 2022 Pennsylvania State of Education. And you go to the finance section of this and we all, we all talk about this a lot. The first thing that shows up under pressure on school district budgets is charter school tuition payments. And we know, we all know that that's increasing in our district. And it has been that, you know, is representative of the thing. Because the next thing is inadequate state funding, special education costs. We always talk about that, that that continues to increase every year. Pension costs in the facilities. We, we all know that most of our revenue comes from local revenue. And again, we all know that that, that's been declining with the appeals and the, you know, businesses moving out and that sort of thing. Pennsylvania ranks 45th out of the nation for getting money from the state. And, and again, I don't think anybody sees much change there. Then there's charts on here about the ESRS funding and the federal relief funding that's was given to all the districts throughout the nation, but we also know that that's coming to an end here, at least for now. And we're running, you know, within a year or so, that funding is going to be used and gone. And we all know that we're going to have to make some tough, tough decisions a, a year or two from now or even shorter of whether we're going to keep those programs and if we are, how are we going to fund them? Again, that, there's just so many indicators when you look into this. You know, the money, you know, we're talking, it talks about plans for spending on learning loss. And kudos to everybody for supporting the summer program last year and this year, but that's one of those ESRS funded things. It is going to be tough to go, you know, have it go away. The pensions, there's a couple of things on that, but, you know, the chart shows it to continue to go up. The, the line is getting less steep, but it's still going up in the future years. And this goes out to 2028, 2029. 34.9 cents of every dollar spent on salaries will go towards pension obligations. That, that again, is a shocking fact to me. There's more stuff on charter schools. So don't take my vote tonight as anything other than looking into the facts. Even, even if there would have been a pay freeze or something across this contract, we would still be considerably above definitely our Indiana County schools and even some of these other schools that I mentioned. I think that's it. I'll come back if I think it's.
Okay, Terry. Anybody else?
I'd just like to say that the negotiations of this was done with a lot of good faith on both sides. I don't think both sides are extremely happy with the outcome. But I think that at the end of the day, with the contract, if both sides can at least agree that we each got something we wanted and needed, that it was successful. I'm not entirely happy with the contract, but we've got great teachers. We've got great people who are working on both sides. And we had to meet in the middle. That's it.
Tammy, anybody else? Cindyb?
Yep, and I'm not as good as Terry yet, talking off the cuff, so I wrote mine. I attended my first school board meeting when there was an attempt to build a mega school, which I believe the community could not afford. At that time, our taxpayers were reeling from the effects of a property tax reassessment. Not being able to pay the property tax bills was a grim reality for many people in the community and a very pressing fear for others. The reassessment caused a lot of economic uncertainty and worry in our county. That concern was ignored by the majority of the school board, and they voted six to three to give the teachers a pay raise and a five-year contract. Two out of three no votes on that 2017 contract were cast by our current board president and vice president. Now, five years later, as the economic crisis caused by the reassessment was finally starting to fade, the people of the district find themselves in the midst of another economic mess. COVID-19, the fire at the Eisenhower Elementary School, the war in Ukraine, inflation, unemployment, underemployment, job insecurity, increasing drug, alcohol, and mental health problems, supply chain deficiencies, increasing food costs, clothing costs, utility costs, medical costs, and gasoline costs have moved in to replace the reassessment issues. And don't forget, anchor stores have left the mall. Hundreds of private housing units and dorm facilities are vacant. The future of our local coal-fired power plants and the jobs they provide is uncertain. IRMC has been strained almost to the breaking point by the pandemic and a labor dispute. The enrollment at IUP has plunged from approximately 15,000 to less than 9,000, taking with it the financial support that the student dollars pumped into our local economy. The teachers in our district are very well paid and did not miss one penny of their salaries because of the pandemic. Even during the government imposed shutdown, when schools and businesses were closed, the teachers still received their full pay, whether they were teaching or not. Not one was laid off. Not one had their hours reduced to part-time. This was not true for the rest of the people in the community who pay the school property taxes, which in turn pay the teachers. Just how well-paid are they? According to the 2020 U.S. Census, the yearly median income was about $58,000 in white township and $31,000 in Indiana borough. The borough income is significantly lower than the township because it includes IUP students living in town who have little to no income. But even if we were to double the borough number or make it identical to that of white township, it still can't compare to that of the teachers in this district. For this current school year, the median teacher salary is $91,110. And that's for nine months, not 12. Adjusted to reflect a 12-month salary, it would be over $121,000, more than twice as much as the $58,000. Many members of our community have been living for years on stagnant wages. Business owners have personally taken pay cuts or freezes in order to keep their employees working. Many senior citizens barely exist on fixed incomes. A lot of people have been forced to work multiple jobs in order to make ends meet. Times have been tough for a long time, and there is no hint that things will get better soon. These hardworking people, the taxpayers who elected the members of this board, deserve to have their confidence in us validated. This is not sustainable. We have, we only have 218 teachers in our schools, and about half of them do not live in or pay taxes in this district. But we have 2,800 students and more than 31,000 people in our district whom we represent. We need to watch out for the people who elected us. We need to keep our election promises. We need to vote against this contract.
Thanks, Cindyb. Sue?
Yeah, I have a very different perspective, being a teacher for most of my life and still being in education field. And I would like to respond to some of those things that my colleagues brought up with respect. First of all, our teachers work longer days than an extra day every school year than all the other surrounding districts. Also, you mentioned the mental health issues. These teachers are dealing every day with children coming in with severe mental health issues. And we don't want to pay them. We're paying them to be mental health counselors, counselors, nurses, teachers, parents. I mean, they do so much more than come in and teach every day from a lesson plan. I don't know any teacher that works just nine months. Most teachers work 12 months in a nine-month time, and then over the summer, they're taking classes. They're doing, working in the summer school program, and yes, they're going to pay to do that. But they're keeping up with their professional development because they have to. Now, it's a law that every five years, they have to have so many credits or so many hours of professional development to keep their positions. The teachers in this district, the reason their salary is so high is because they've bettered themselves. They have master's degrees, the majority of them. You talk about the kids that come, and I mentioned this before at a school board meeting. Who do you think buys the kids food when they come to school hungry? Who do you think buys them socks and shoes when these kids come to school with nothing on their feet in the winter time? It's the teachers who are spending their salaries, and yes, they're making good money, I admit that. But they deserve every penny they get, and the raise that they're asking for right now is not nearly enough, in my opinion. I mean, I get, I, I sympathize with people in our community, but I also know what teachers do day in and day out. And we, we could never afford to pay them enough, in my opinion, never.
Thank you, Sue. Jim?
Um, there, the negotiations for this contract were long and I agree with, with Ms. Blank that the, there was good faith on both sides. It's, my view has changed multiple times through this. I, I'm elected by, to represent the community members, and I have a responsibility to them. I also have kids in the district, and I have a responsibility to them to make sure they receive an education. The, the numbers that Terry brought up, those aren't new numbers. We, we discussed those at length during the negotiation period, and they're shocking. You know, we don't have the 30th in the state tax base, but we have the 30th in the state cost for teacher salary. That is, is very hard to project into the future and see how that's sustainable. And then at the exact same time, there's a teacher shortage and a sub shortage. And while I don't foresee any teachers, you know, picking up their bag and leaving, we want to attract good quality teachers to this area, and that's always been the case for Indiana. We have attracted teachers from multiple different areas to provide education to our students. So my vote tonight is, is based on the amalgam of those two facts that I, I do represent the areas, the community members, but I also have to represent the students and their education.
Tom?
It seems like everyone has pretty much covered the waterfront on this. I would like to point out that for the last three years, it's been a real horrendous haul for all of us. Going through, going through COVID, going through a fire. And our teachers have made those adjustments. And we haven't had any, any problems unless you've been protecting this, Mike, about, about teachers not showing up for work, about kids not getting education. We pivoted on the COVID years to tiny classes, some on, some off, some things we've never done before. And, and our teachers made that transition, made it better than it, than it could have been. And really pulled through. We didn't have to cancel school because we didn't have enough faculty. We didn't have to cancel because we couldn't get the student teachers in, the substantive teachers in. Somehow or other, between the teachers and the administration, we managed to get through this. Now, there was also an inflationary period of somewhere near zero. And now we're somewhere, we're knows where, seven, eight, 10%. I don't like the numbers. These are, these are, these are good salaries, and I expect that we have great teachers teaching. I would like to point out too, that in the last decade, we've gone from somewhere around 10% free reduced lunch to somewhere around 50% free and reduced lunch. Yet our scores haven't fallen like they should have. With that, with that population, we have managed, we have managed to take kids who have less
Resources?
Resources, yeah, resources and even home support. I suspect we're seeing a lot more single fam, uh, single parent families. We're seeing a lot more trouble. We're doing a lot more than just teasing kids to read right now. And yet somehow the faculty, through some miracle, is able to teach these kids and, and produce quality students. Our high school, our high school is still ranked pretty highly in the state. I think it's in the top 10% in that range. I'd like it higher. I'd like less kids to fall off the, fall off the truck. But these people have been putting in the work. And one of the problems with nine-month appointment is they can't go out and get another full-time job in three months. Okay, they're here for, we're buying them for 12. They're here for, we're buying them for 12 months. And a lot of these people are involved in the community, even if they're not working here, living here. And there's, there's things to hate in this contract. Absolutely. But in, in my view of it, it's the best deal for, for both sides of this issue. I'm part of supportive. I appreciate the work that's been done for the last, what, three years in, in the support that these people have given our students, day in and day out. So that's where we're going with this. Thank you.
Julia?
Thank you, Walter. I agree with Tom. I think the district's in pretty stable shape, and I think it's been a lot of hard work to get here. And I'm proud of what we've been able to achieve, and I think our best days are ahead of us. What we've provided in this, these storms is stability for our students and for the general community. And we've had excellent management, I think, from Mr. Lukovich and his staff, and I think Mr. Schruth has done a tremendous job of keeping us together behind a common agenda. Nobody always agrees with everything, but we've managed to stay together. I think from my perspective, this is a fairly decent contract. I, for me, you know, having gone through serving on this board during the pandemic and seeing what happens, kind of on an inside track, I do feel as though the most important thing that this contract did for me, it was one of the three biggest things that I walked in thinking about, was that we would not have any further interruptions of school due to disputes between the community of, among our community, teachers, administration, board members, community members. And I think this contract, wrapping it up now, if we're going to vote that way tonight, I don't know if we haven't voted yet, but it seems to me that we won't have an interruption in classes, and these kids, more than anything, I think, need that kind of dependability. There's no question that the federal monies that have come out of the COVID, federal legislation, there's no question that that has helped this district innovate. And I, I agree with you, Terry, you know, unlikely that this money will stay around forever, but if we don't learn something, what's working and what isn't, then it, it's up to us to make sure this money works and that we figure out how to replicate programs that have worked. We do have declining enrollment, and I think, you know, we don't know where that's going to go. I'm not about to give up on Indiana, though. We can look at the negative side, and we can point them out, and they're not insignificant. However, these students are young, they're going to go out and face a very complicated world, and we owe it to them to give them the best education to prepare them for the world they're going to face, and that isn't inexpensive. So I'm in support of the contract. And I think it's fairly decent. I think the steps were particularly important to me. I thought it made a huge difference in my decision-making process. So, thank you.
Thanks, Julia. From my perspective, yes, I was one of the ones that voted against the raise five years ago. That was a different world in which we lived. There were three factors that really had the greatest influence over me in this, in this process. One of them is one that Julia pointed out about the stability, but I think we need to look at stability from two perspectives. One is the stability of the community, and the second is the stability of the students. And I think they have been hurt most because of the instability that we've seen throughout the COVID. And I think it's a critical factor in trying to maintain that stability if we're going to ever recover them for the losses that they had during COVID. The second factor, okay, is about the supply and the demand for teachers. We just go to straight economics, okay? And you look at the supply and the demand right now, there's a fairly strong demand for teachers. And the, we look at the pipeline, at the students that are coming from IUP and are other traditional state teachers' colleges, there aren't a lot of students coming through that are choosing education. And the final thing was the steps. And I've got to agree with Terry. Since I became a board member back in 2005, it baffled me. I don't know of any other industry, government or outside government, in which you can reach the top of your pay scale in 10 years. And the fact that the association was willing to even discuss this and, and, and come to an agreement on it is absolutely huge in my perspective in how I'm going to vote, because I think that's critical. While the short term may not reflect a great deal of savings, if we can continue those efforts over the long term, I think it will be worth the time, trouble, and effort that we have expended to get to this point. I also want to point out, and I'm grateful that the association members are here this evening, I want to thank you all for your, your discussions and, and the negotiations. But I also want to point out that every single one of these board members didn't laugh, didn't joke, didn't make smart remarks, because that's how serious we took these negotiations and how critical and important we, we know that they are to the community and moving Indiana School District forward. Yes, I realize there is always the concern from the community, but as Jim said, we do ultimately serve two masters here. One is the taxpayer, and one is the students, which we are charged to educate. One final comments from anybody?
My biggest fear with this contract is that when the time comes and people then say we need another art teacher, or we need another math teacher, we need other resources. Because of this contract, we may not be able to fund it without raising taxes or anything else. So that's my worry.
Well, I think we're in pretty good shape. I mean, we didn't have to, we looked at it this year, and we have a pretty good balance in our general fund, so it doesn't look like we're going to have to have a tax increase that's several years in a row. I think, I really believe that if this district is properly managed from a financial and educational point of view, we can work this out, the base is solid enough. So, you know, I, I'm not seeing any real danger here. We can, we can afford to have a pretty doggone nice school district, and it's only going to get better. Heck, we just had state chief meetings coming for the...
Tammy, I would also respond that throughout the last three, four years since Mike's tenure on this as the superintendent, that mostly through his efforts and working with the association, they have tried to figure out ways in which we can be creative to provide that additional teacher support for the program in, in, in making it actually happen. And I, and I would make the assumption that the association would continue to work in those, in that same vein of trying to help us figure out how we can actually pay for some of those additional support people that would be...
I, I agree. They've done a great job with MOAs. They've done a great job meeting our needs. And at the same time, the simple citizens who are robbing Peter to pay Paul and juggling themselves, I just didn't want our school district to have to juggle as well. And that was my fear. That's all.
Understood. Tom?
Yeah, in that vein, family, in 2018, we had $6.2 million in our capital fund balance, and we're projected to be at 8.6 million at the end of this year. So what is that? That's five years. We put 2, we put 2.4 million in our capital balance without raising taxes.
Yes, we did, but we also have all these other things that we have to fund.
We've always had these other things.
I know.
And, and we're very careful when it comes time to hire the extra art teacher or the extra teacher in the first grade, okay? And we've done a very good job of hiring what's needed and not in excess. And, and it's going to be, and we'll have to continue this, this, we'll have to continue this, this...
Dance.
Very, very serious dance, very careful. Okay? And, and, and the, and the things that this administration, these teachers have done with, with reading, with dual credit...
STEM projects.
STEM projects, the things we're seeing happening now in the district that weren't there three years ago are really, really impressive. And so I'm, I'm, I'm in Julie's camp of saying, we're in pretty good shape now, okay, moving forward. And, and it's going to be, it will be a challenge.
No, I, I, I'm also in that camp. I just want to bring these things up so that they open and it's been discussed, so nobody can say, you know, what did, what about this later on? So that was my thought.
Any final comments before I call the roll?
Yeah, over the past couple of years, like I mentioned, we've got $3.7 million in ESRS funding, so that drastically helped that general fund increase. So again, let's talk the facts. We also are going to probably vote in July or whenever to borrow $10 million, which my opinion is we're going to be borrowing at least another $10 million to finish the projects. Most, well, all that surplus money that you're talking about, we are accounting for to spend on the East Pike Old Office area, the HVAC system here in Eisenhower. But we're still borrowing 10 more, plus, in my opinion, we're going to be borrowing at least 10 more million. So to say that we're in, you know, good shape, not once we get through these projects, and we're going to do that in the next couple of years.
We have to do the projects, though. I mean, and I think, I think it depends on how we look at, you know, it's going to shape up, and we're going to have to closely manage it, and whether or not we, you know, Ben Franklin's always that one that's out there, so...
And that's already being talked about, being pushed off now, because we were...
I wouldn't say pushed off.
Yeah, it is being pushed off.
I think it's more like it's on the timeline.
Pushed off down the timeline.
Well, that's, that's a result of the fire, I think, as much as I can.
So, I mean, we were all sort of going down the road that we were going to do Eisenhower, and then within a couple of years, be able to jump to Ben Franklin, and it's not looking good to do that right now.
I don't know. I hate to, I don't think you can predict the future, but I think right now, we, we are, we see signs in both directions, and hard to say, you know, some economists say deflation, some say inflation. I just think right now, we live in the present, and this is our task at the moment. And I think on this contract...
I have to look into the future.
Well, yeah. But, but, but they're projections. It's a projection, and we've seen these projections change over the years. You know, we thought we would have a bigger population.
Final, final comments from anyone else? Jared, can I have a roll call, please?
Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Cindy Brode?
No.
Julie Chmarkey-Kukrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Kirk?
No.
Dr. Riggs?
Yes.
Dr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Schruth?
Yes.
Motion passes 6 to 2.
Okay, thank you, everyone. 6.9, Cindy.
6.9. It's a memorandum of agreement, but the board approves the memorandum of agreement between the Indiana area, Indiana Area Education Association and the Indiana Area School District.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out how to silence that thing. The, it's been moved in second to approve the memorandum. Are there questions, comments, or discussion on the MOA?
Is there anything? Is it good to share with the public what the MOA is?
Mike?
Jared, you can clarify if I may speak it up, but this agreement allows, this MOA allows us to, allows teachers who may want to consider retiring to be able to still retire and receive a retirement incentive. Instead of listening to the contract, sometimes when you have votes of this nature, some people may be unhappy from their collective side, and what this does is still allows them to retire and receive the retirement incentive. Correct, Jared?
I understand that this is a fish one of that contract. Have you done this before?
We have, we have made different, you know, agreements in the past, similar to this. What we did in our negotiations is try to clean this language up so it doesn't happen anymore, and that's what we're working towards. But, you know, when you have an agreement like this in defense of the staff, I believe they voted today, so they just saw some of this recently. So what this does is allows them a safety net to get out, because at the June, January 15 deadline, they may have not wanted to retire, and this allows them to retire if they're unhappy with said contract. Jared, anything you want to clarify?
No. So exactly what are the compasses?
I just want to say, I have, I normally have no problem with the MOAs that we come up with, but since I am so against this contract, I cannot vote for this either.
Okay. Questions, comments, or further discussion on the MOA? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Carrie?
Okay, thank you.
Buildings and grounds?
Yeah. We did have a meeting last week on May 16. It was a record three-hour meeting for me. It was exhausting. First topic was the Eisenhower remodel project update, and we basically talked about CJL is the engineering firm hired by Bucart Horner Architect, and they had submitted to us a report showing five different options for the HVAC system at Eisenhower, and the committee was going to move forward with option five, which is geothermal for the building. So that's on the agenda for tonight. And we talked about the East Pike HVAC system. We had further discussion on that. Really no firm decision was made on that, but we do have a motion on it tonight, because we've had some discussion since then. And then on the agenda tonight, I'm going to read it that we're going to go with the VRF system, variable refrigerant, VRS, I guess, variable refrigerant system for the East Pike Old Office space. So then we brainstormed potential uses for Horace Mann after Eisenhower is open for students again, and people can read the things that we come up with. It looks like there's six different options that were brainstormed. So then the idea is for, probably at the next committee meeting, we will then take a look at the three lists, two lists that we have, that we've done, we've brainstormed.
Maybe three.
Three, yeah. So then we'll talk about those at the next committee meeting of what we're going to do with any of them, or, you know, can we scratch some of them off? Do we want to pursue some? It was also brought up at the meeting about, at some point in the future, we may want to hire a marketing firm to market the Horace Mann building. We then talked about the capital reserve budget, which we also did it on finance committee tonight, and there's a motion, or not, no, there's not a motion on tonight's agenda for that. So we, there were some revisions made to that, and you'll, we talked about them again, like you said, about the finance. We then got an update on the Ben Franklin outdoor classroom by the principal, and we then talked about a potential solar panel installation across the district. There was a representative from Solar Renewable Energy that went through a PowerPoint presentation, and then he took several questions afterwards. That presentation probably lasted over an hour, I think. So there is a motion on tonight's agenda to move forward with exploring that option some more and having some more meetings with Solar Renewable Energy, and then also we're going to reach out some, to some other school districts in the state that have entered into lease agreements with them also. We did not get an update on the Horace Mann electrical panel. That should be hopefully coming next week. Chaney's going to try to get the results of that heat testing that was done. And then he's also going to try to get a quote on doing the rest, the rest of the electrical panels across the district and the other buildings. We then talked about auctioning off excess furniture and equipment throughout the district, so Jared has been working with all the principals and, and I would imagine Chaney to develop lists of what all can be auctioned off, and there's a motion on tonight's agenda. auctioned off, and there's a motion on tonight's agenda for move forward with that. And then Chaney made us aware that there's baseball infield mix, that you've mixed into the soil in, in a dirt baseball infield that's surplus, and we're gonna offer that first to White Township, if they're not interested, we'll ask the YMCA. At the committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to motions. Does anybody want anything separate?
I have questions about A and C, but I, I, they don't need to be separate, I'll just.
Okay. We'll move, then, I moved it 7.2 A, B, and C. 7.3, 7.4, 7.5, and 7.6.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussions? Cindy, you said you had some questions on A and C?
Yeah, A is for topographic survey services, and the first question is, I noticed that the contract had a range for the, the price, it was like $3,500 range. I didn't see anything in there that listed what would trigger the difference in the price. Just wondering if you knew?
The way I read it, it was the number of hours that they spend on it. They, they're gonna try to do it at the lower value, I think it was at 16,000.
15,500.
Yeah.
The reason for the value range was the difficulty of picking the size of the wetland.
This is for the stream cross-sections.
Yeah, that they have to do.
Let's see.
I understand that the survey work may, the survey may extend farther, may push up to the north further.
Well, and that is kind of what triggered my second question. Number C is a wetland survey. So that, that takes place just in the wetland area, and the other survey is for?
What they'll do is, 7, 7-2C is they have to go out and flag the limits of any wetlands that are in the proposed disturbance area of what we may do with our stormwater.
Okay.
So until a biologist or a whoever that is certified to flag wetlands, 'cause out there, they won't know the extent of them, for sure.
And will they be able to do that before the topographic survey is done?
They'll do the wetland survey first, because the surveyors have to pick up those limits of those wetland areas.
Okay, alright.
And then 7-2A is, again, you know, we've been, well, our architect and their engineer has been working on what the stormwater retention and stuff is gonna be, so that's why 7-point A, or 7-2A and 7-2C are on here. And then 7.2B, I'd mentioned that we're gonna move forward with the geothermal auction for the HBAC at Eisenhower. At East Pike, we're only gonna move forward with the VRF system, not the geothermal.
The motion carries, VRF or geothermal.
I know, that's why.
I'm still saying, I'm still saying both, both systems probably take.
Well.
That's what you're saying.
Right?
That's what you're saying, I'm saying both systems on the table.
No, I'm not, I, I wasn't gonna read the geothermal.
So then, so, so let's, let's do this, let's pull 7.5, um, from this vote.
7.3.
Or 7.3, I'm sorry. And then, um, if you wish to amend it or read it differently, or Tom wishes to amend or read, you know, amend it appropriately, uh, then we can handle it that way without holding the rest of this up.
Okay. 7.4, I'd mentioned about, it's just working more with that solar renewable energy and the solar array installation across the district.
The, could we, a little clarification, I'll keep going, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Okay, 7-4, we're talking through, um, solar renewable, they're looking at providing somewhere near, potentially a near 100% of our electrical power through solar arrays. They would install the, they would provide and install the system at no cost to the district, and we would end up applying power from it for a number of years. And so, we're, what we're asking for is, is permission to keep exploring this and see if we can get this thing to the next level. So, they've done a, they've done a kind of a satellite view of the district, and they think, they think mainly on roofs and some, some ground, I think they can provide almost 100% of the power.
How much percent?
100%. And, and that's a goal.
Going near there, I thought, I thought last thing we were at 85.
85, but they, that was not Eisenhower, that was not the bus park. Those three buildings are not included yet, that they are, that they were. The bus park just came online.
The bus park.
The bus park and the field behind the bus park.
Yeah, but we had to take off some ground, though, too.
That's why I say that's the goal, and that's why I'm saying near 100%, that's the goal.
Okay, questions, comments, or discussion on 7, 2, 4, 5, and 6? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried, okay, 7.3, Terry.
Alright, East Pike renovation HBAC system. It's based on the recommendation of Building, Ground, and Transportation Committee, a study by Bucart Horon Architects to further study the installation of a VRF system as part of the East Pike renovation project, be authorized.
Second.
Moved in second. Okay, Tom, do you wanna?
I'd like to amend that to include the old geothermal. So I guess I need a second for that motion.
You need a second for that.
What did you say, old?
Or.
Oh, or. A second.
Okay, so the, uh, just to be clear, Tom's move that we amend the motion that Terry made to include geothermal. I'll call for discussion in just a moment, uh, but the vote, this first vote will be on whether or not to amend the original motion. If that fails, then the original motion will stand, and we'll vote on it. If Tom's amendment passes, then the original motion will be amended as, as presented. Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Tom?
I think it's premature to pick a VRF system over a geothermal system without, without looking at both systems. I don't think that the geothermal system has been given a, uh, even shake. I know it works, and I'm not sure that our consulting engineers agree that. VRF system is, is a, um, it also will work, and I don't know which one I would pick without actually having some discussion and some study of those two systems. I know the system that they originally proposed, hated.
So we've, we've at least improved.
Either one of these systems would be an improvement over function, over, over, originally approved with the promotion of the group company. I think that both the geothermal and the VRF system need to be evaluated at the same, the same level, and not, and the geosystem, geosystem not thrown out. I don't think, I don't think it's been given an even shake.
Okay, so, um, any other comments?
Yes.
Terry, can I ask?
Yeah, question you. Is there a reason why, why you chose the VRF system?
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, Tom has a lot of experience with this, and, and I have some. We also have gone back and forth, back and forth on this. It's to the point now where definitely if we include this geothermal to be looked at again, we're gonna be paying. There may not be a cost if we just go with the VRF system. I feel, you know, we're talking with our architect, we're talking with their engineer, and just not the engineer that we've been dealing with before, uh, but also hit one of the owners of the company that he's most comfortable, or they're most comfortable with the VRF system. We also spoke with a local HBAC contractor, and that was his recommendation also. My opinion is, the space is too small of an aerial, area to, for the cost of a geothermal system, we're only talking about four classrooms and a coffee room, and, yeah, five classrooms, a coffee room, and an outside services room. So it's a, not a big area, you'd be having to drill wells for a geothermal system, and that's where a lot of the cost comes in at. And as far as efficiency, I think the VRF system will be, you know, maybe as efficient, or one way or the other, a little bit, because the actual partner, the engineering company, come up with a good idea, well, actually, I'd said this a couple of weeks ago, but he also mentioned it was to use the existing gas boiler system in this building to supplement the heat back there with the VRF system when it gets cold, because a VRF system is basically a heat pump system. And, uh, so, you could also then watch your electrical costs and your gas costs, and if the gas prices go down again, you heat mostly back there with the, with the gas, you know, like we do now and stuff. So, I, I feel very confident that the VRF system's the one to go with. It also takes minimal space to install it, and we don't have a lot of, we wanna expose the beams and the decking in those rooms back there that are not exposed now, so it minimizes maybe the monobulk head and stuff that you have to build in there to hide things, so.
That's true for both systems, as opposed to the system, the rooftop system.
Okay, any other questions, Cindy, I think you had something?
I, I like geothermal and I like the VRF, and the geothermal is, they're both, they're both efficient. The geothermal is more efficient, and for Eisenhower, I have absolutely no problem saying, let's go geothermal. It's like, we're doing it, we need to do it right the first time. But what we're doing here in East Pike is a, a small project. We're not, we basically have, at, at best, we will have two different heating systems. And whenever, I don't know when East Pike is on the, on the schedule for being renovated completely, but it's not till well down the road, unless, God forbid, there's another thing like the fire. But well, well down the road, Ben Franklin's coming first, and then eventually East Pike. So until that happens, until we're ready to do the whole thing, go for the big, big, I think we should go with this, because we can still use the boilers that we have, and it's just not, I mean, I, I just think that's the way to go, because it's not such a huge job.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Because it's not such a huge job, it's 4,000 feet, we're talking about five or six wells, 200 feet deep. It's not a complex geothermal job, Ethan. And in the geothermal, we also can use the heat to supplement boilers, and, um, their systems are, are, are very close in, in, in performance, and would give us a chance to see, to see a geothermal system before you, before you jump off the bridge for East Pike, I'm sorry, for Eisenhower. All I'm asking for is the ability to study this just one more time before we, before we pick. Right now, it's kind of like the, um, we're picking the wire size for the service entrance, and we don't have enough knowledge. That's why I'd like to see the study done.
Okay, anybody else? Alright.
Do you have an idea how much study would be?
You ever got any information, Matt?
I don't know. I mean, we have been going around in circles for probably three months on this, or longer. November, we voted to go with the original system, so for six or seven months, we've been going in circles.
Okay. All those, all those in favor of the amendment to add geothermal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Wait, what are we voting on now? We're voting, what you said.
Okay, so Tom's, Tom proposed
What do you wanna do?
To add geothermal to the motion. Okay, and we're voting on whether to add geothermal to the motion. Okay, and, and then we'll vote on the, the motion, so.
So we're saying or.
Yeah.
But it costs money, and we've already done it.
We haven't done it.
Yes, we have, it's in their studies.
They're studying, oh.
Okay, so, the way it's published in your agenda, Julia, is not how Terry made the motion. He dropped the or geothermal. Tom added it back in, or is trying to add it back in with his amendment. And so we're gonna vote on whether or not to add the geothermal back into the motion that Terry made. Roll call.
Cindy Brode?
Mr. Cronare?
No.
Julia Chmaki-Kukra?
Yeah.
Mr. Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirk?
No.
Dr. Riggs?
No.
Dr. Schaefer?
No.
Mr. Schroed?
No.
Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Motion fails, okay. So the motion on the table now is to install a VRF system as part of the East Pike renovation. Is there any further discussion, questions, or comments on the original motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the original motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
One no from Tom, okay, motion carries. Julia, we're finally down to you.
I know where I am. Thank you, we had a short meeting tonight, my report's short. We discussed our latest updated budget projection, which is the same as the last meeting, except we've added in the driver education money. Then we went to athletic funding, lacrosse, hockey, and rugby. We have tentatively agreed as a committee, and I think, well, Tom's getting down to the wire, because as a reminder, we vote on the adoption of the budget on June 13th, so I'm trying to make that meeting. So, of funding rugby with $5,000 this year, that would be a doubling from what we added last year. Hockey stays at 10,000, and we would, uh, we've agreed, uh, to recommend to the board that we phase in the lacrosse between now and 20, 24, 25, is correct, no, did I have that right, 23, 24?
24, 25.
24, 25, yeah, so that would put us at 30,000 this year, 15,000 for the boys team and the girls team.
It's gonna take thousands each, to be clear.
Yeah. So that's, that, that's exciting news, I think, and, um, so that's a, you know, it's, it's, um, I think it's progress with the budget. So we know about the, oh, and we've also added into the deferred amendments, the request from the track team, which was last spring for two, two track and field items, so new pit and the pole balling, and for 45,000, what was the other one, the pit? The, the jumping pit and the, the long jumper, and then the pole ball.
Yes, I think both of those pits.
So tonight we have, um, really two wonderful motions on the agenda. So I'm gonna move that the board accepts the $750 donation from PASR Pennsylvania Association of School Retirees to be used in the district's library program, and that the board accepts an anonymous donation of $31,065 to be used to purchase school supplies and equipment.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in, any discussion, questions, or comments?
Well, that's phenomenal. Both donations. And that's not the first time, right, for the second one, or is that?
Yeah, this family previously donated, um, to the elementary schools, what she was asking, what they were asking to do is what we've done at the secondary level with the school nurses and some of our specialists, so. Um, and additionally, they also bought every staff and every, every student in this entire district next year a t-shirt. That reinforces our school rules with regards to positive behavior interventions to support, so this individual was just incredibly generous and kind, and used the district very favorably in the work that everyone's doing, and she's just trying, they're trying to do their help, do whatever they can to help, um, you know, bring some positivity to the district. This also includes an eye, and I'm gonna screw this up, but some sort of eye machine that the nurses can use to help students detect vision issues and impairments. This is one thing that nurses requested, Jared and I were working on, and then this came in a timely offering, so we worked with her, made her aware of our request, and she approved it, and the money is in already in the district's hands, so we're now just retroactively approving it, and we're gonna order these out over summer, Mr. Paul?
Okay, further questions, comments, or discussion? I will add my thanks to both as well. It is great to have this continuing. It is great to have this continuing community support that people are willing to provide this additional help to make life better at IASD. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried. We're now down to closing items. There is no discussion. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Josie?
Again, I'll say, as the oldest person in this room, as a former history teacher, I was part of the leadership team 25 years ago when the Indiana Area Education Association went on a strike for 10 days. I understand the seriousness and the responsibility of negotiating. It's a very hard thing to do. We came out of that strike after 10 days and there was an agreement reached because we had an arbitrator, went to arbitration. And Mr. Kerr, that's where the 10 steps came from. I was part of that team that brought it down to 10 steps. And I will say, at that time, we front loaded that contract to attract the best and the brightest to teaching within our district. And obviously it must have worked because we have seen, I think Dr. Ray has brought out that the teachers have worked very hard, particularly during this COVID time. I am now a retired teacher and a, and a fixed income person. And I have seen the changes in Indiana over those 25 years. So tonight, the two words that came out the most in the back and forth that I listened to were sustainability and responsibility. And that is something that is going, with all the challenges ahead in public education, it's going to have to come from the cooperation between the teachers and future boards, not just this board, to be able to move forward. Indiana is not the same place. Economically, we are not the same. And growth is something that we have, we'd like to see happen, but it's not necessarily going to happen. So I commit in both sides. I listen to the pros and the cons. There are some that I agree with and some that I disagree with. But my position now is to say, responsibility and sustainability are yours to work together. Good luck. The future awaits your decisions.
Okay, any other further comments, public comments? Alright, don't see anybody raising their hand online. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. I just wanted to address all of you. I really want to send out thanks to the administration who worked diligently with us. I want to thank the board, who also worked diligently with us to come up with this collaborative agreement. As we sit here and gone through the months of the process, what I can say that I really respect is that we can gather like this and that all of our opinions may be different. That there's some here, some there. But what we're able to do is to do that professionally. We're able to talk through these things and work through these things in a professional manner. I really appreciate that. That to me is what Indiana is all about, where we can work together. And 25 years of union leadership here, I can guarantee you that that is our focus, has been our focus, and will continue to be our focus as a collaborative effort. No matter what the opinion on the matter is, that we will continue to do that. And I thank you all for your efforts as well.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? We don't see anybody online. Okay, there were some enclosures this evening. We did have an executive session, which we discussed the labor contract. We discussed hirings and we discussed real estate issues. Our next board meeting will be, it's set for June the 13th, but it may very well be a change in having one on June the 6th. We'll go through the proper notification if we do change that. And we have academic committee meeting on June the 6th at 5:30. There is a typo for the policy and personnel. And that should say June 13th rather than April 13th. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Do we also, are we having a board meeting on June 6th also?
I, I believe that we are, okay? But we'll get the proper notification out to make it official. Okay? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.